The African Union is anticipating the delegation to address the Court and calling Professor Hajar Galdish to the podium. Madam, you have the floor.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it's an honour for me to represent the African Union, an organisation numbering fifty-five member states. On this last day of pleadings, within the framework of the present advisory proceedings, it's important to recall the historical context and the tragic circumstances that prompted the UN General Assembly to request once again, and regrettably for the international community, an advisory opinion from the Court on the situation of the occupied Palestinian territories. Now, the history of Palestine is a history of dispossession, displacement and dehumanisation. It's the history of an injustice. It's the tragedy of a people who, for over seven decades, is systematically subjugated and oppressed by the Israeli colonial project, whose aim is to establish total and exclusive control on all of Palestine's soil, to deny the Palestinian people its inalienable right to self-determination and deprive it of its right to live freely in its native land. The ongoing Israeli aggression against Gaza demonstrates this tragedy. A population of over two million innocent and defenceless civilians is the victim of a campaign of wanton death and destruction, consequence of the collective punishment exerted by the occupying power for decades. That's why, at the conference of heads of state and government of members of the African Union that was held on seventeen and eighteen February this year, the heads of state and government of member states of the EU expressed, and I quote, "their total outrage at the humanitarian catastrophe caused by Israeli forces occurring in the Gaza Strip and their full support for the Palestinian people in their legitimate struggle against Israeli occupation." The heads of state and government of member states of the EU also denounced, and I quote, "the collective punishment measures against civilians, especially the attempts to forcibly transfer the Gaza population." Consequently, Israel's aggression against Gaza is nothing but a shameful attempt to create another Nakba, a further catastrophe destined to erasing the Palestinian presence in Palestine. Indeed, barely a few weeks ago, this Court recognised the grave peril that the Palestinian people were facing in Gaza, when it determined that South Africa, one of the member states of the African Union, had established the plausibility of its allegation according to which Israel is committing genocide. Nothing can justify the unspeakable suffering and horrors inflicted on the population of Gaza. That is the essence of the Palestinian tragedy. For over a century, the Palestinian people is enduring a succession of Nakbas, from the Baalfo declaration to the wars of nineteen forty-eight, fifty-six, sixty-seven and eighty-two, with the establishment and expansion of Israeli settlements and the construction of the separation wall. At every moment of history, the Palestinians have been the victims of subjugation, displacement and dispossession. The escalating violence and the ruthless war machine are ceaselessly devastating the Palestinian population. Schools, places of worship, homes, hospitals are reduced to nothing, leaving behind them only the smoke of bombs that continue to rain down on Gaza. By miracle, children are born under the rubble, but they're living on borrowed time, given the famine affecting them. Grieving families surviving without water, without electricity and see, day after day, their hopes, their dreams and their destiny disappearing forever under the ruins. The conscience of humankind will never forget it. Mr. President, members of the Court, this advisory proceeding aims at preventing this new injustice resulting not just from the force of arms, but also Israeli practices comprising the de jure and de facto annexation of Palestinian territories, the illegal establishment of settlements, the alteration of the demographic character of Jerusalem, and then the confiscation and destruction of Palestinian property, expropriation of Palestinian land, the construction of bypass roads and maintenance of the separation wall. The fact that these Israeli practices in occupied Palestinian territories are continuing and accelerating is the result of the impunity that Israel enjoys and its breach of the right of people and the just Cogan's norms that are enforceable ergo omnis. This contempt is illustrated by the Israeli decision to ignore the advisory opinion of this Court regarding the separation wall, or the countless resolutions passed by UN organs that have documented these violations of international law. This instant advisory proceeding is an opportunity to, at last, hold Israel accountable for its acts, but also to put an immediate end to its impunity and to uphold general international law, international humanitarian law and human rights law. Furthermore, the African Union is a party to this proceeding because it feels it has a particular responsibility towards the Palestinian people. Its member states emerged from the colonial scourge, waged war against apartheid and racial discrimination and defended the cause of self-determination are present here today, reflects the sentiment expressed by heads of state and government of African Union member states, who stressed, and I quote, "the centrality of the just cause of Palestine and the steadfastness of our supportive position and decisions based on our shared values against colonialism, oppression and apartheid, and the historically established African solidarity with the Palestinian people in their legitimate quest for freedom and an independent state." Mr. President, members of the Court, on the occasion of the advisory opinion of the Court on the Chagos Archipelago, the African Union saw the authority and impact of the Court's decisions. This opinion indeed contributed to almost ending one of the last living forms of colonialism in Africa. As with this case, the question before you doesn't hinge on a dispute opposing two equal parties, but an asymmetrical situation in which an oppressed people is confronted with an occupying power. Therefore, the Court will be able to confirm, in the same way as in the Chagos case, the Palestinian people's right to self-determination and freedom and ensure the state of Palestine is in a position to exercise its full sovereignty and its independence on its territories of the West Bank, Gaza and on its capital, East Jerusalem. Before humbly asking the Court to give the floor to my colleague, Professor Mohamed Hilal, I'd like to address the question of jurisdiction. Our observations will be brief. The vast majority of participants agreed that this instant proceeding, that nothing prevents the Court from exercising its advisory function, it's a position that the African Union shares fully and totally. Indeed, the Court has already confirmed its jurisdiction in a request for an advisory opinion on the same factual situation in the wall opinion, and it has no reason to divert from that assessment. Furthermore, the jurisprudence of the Court has affirmed on numerous occasions that the political nature of a dispute has no incidence on the duty of the Court to answer the questions of a legal order put to it by the General Assembly. Moreover, the Court has abundant evidentiary material and facts available to it, allowing it to render an advisory opinion. Lastly, the existence of a negotiating process cannot justify, by the Court, the use of its discretion not to render said advisory opinion. And contrary to the statements by certain parties, the opinion of the Court far from complicating this process that's in fact at a stalemate can but strengthen it by clarifying the obligations and legal consequences for all parties. In concluding, I should like to recall the words of Nelson Mandela, a few years after the liberation of South Africa. He issued a warning which concerns us all, and I quote:
Given our own freedom, we can fall into the trap of washing our hands of difficulties that others face, yet we would be less than humans if we did so.
And it is in this spirit that he spoke the words that continue to resonate in the streets of the whole world today.
It's incomplete without the freedom of the Palestinians.
Mr. President, I now ask you to kindly give the floor to my colleague, Professor Mohamed Hilal. Thank you for your kind attention.
Je remercie Madame Galdish. I now give it to Mr. Mohamed Hilal. You have the floor, sir.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, it is a privilege to appear before the Court on behalf of the African Union. As indicated by the Legal Council of the African Union, I will cover the following issues. I will identify the internationally wrongful acts that are attributable to Israel and address the question of the legal status of Israel's occupation of the Palestinian territories. Second, I will address the question of whether there are circumstances precluding the wrongfulness of acts that are attributable to Israel. And third, I will outline the legal consequences arising out of these internationally wrongful acts. The point of departure for determining the legal status of Israel's occupation of the Palestinian territories is the question of title. Does Israel have title over the West Bank, Gaza and East Jerusalem? The answer is unequivocally no. Given time constraints, I will only identify the main milestones of Palestine's history. Palestine was under Ottoman sovereignty, and it came under British belligerent occupation during World War One. Then, in nineteen twenty-two, Palestine was placed under a League of Nations mandate that provisionally recognised Palestine as an independent nation under British administration, after which Turkey renounced sovereignty over Palestine pursuant to the nineteen twenty-three Treaty of Lausanne. This was followed in nineteen forty-seven by the adoption of the Palestine Partition Plan, which was never implemented. And then, in nineteen forty-eight, Britain withdrew from Palestine and Israel unilaterally declared independence, which was followed by armistice agreements in nineteen forty-nine and the establishment of Egyptian control over Gaza and Jordanian control over East Jerusalem and the West Bank. And finally, in nineteen sixty-seven, Israel launched an armed attack, as a result of which it occupied the West Bank, Gaza and East Jerusalem. At no point in this process did Israel acquire title over these territories. Moreover, theories that support an alleged Israeli title over these territories, such as the claim that the legal status of Palestinian territories was indeterminate, or that there was a sovereign vacuum that Israel was entitled to fill, are entirely unfounded. Accordingly, since nineteen sixty-seven, Israel has exercised belligerent occupation over the West Bank, Gaza and East Jerusalem. The African Union also submits that Israel's fifty-seven-year occupation of the Palestinian territories is unlawful and must be brought to an end. This determination is based on three arguments. First, as the overwhelming majority of parties in these proceedings have argued, Israel's occupation is unlawful because it violates the prohibition on the acquisition of territory by force, which is a corollary of the prohibition on the use of force. This constitutes a violation of a peremptory rule of international law. The evidence on this point is incontrovertible. Pronouncements by Israel's political leaders and the conduct of Israel on the ground reflect an intention to perpetuate the occupation through acts that amount to de jure and de facto annexation of Palestinian territories. Israel's conduct in the current hostilities in Gaza also demonstrates its goal of entrenching its occupation of Gaza. Israel is reportedly planning to establish permanent buffer zones, maintain a long-term active military presence on the ground and is striving to displace the population of Gaza to neighbouring states. This conduct, which has been roundly denounced by the African Union, confirms Israel's intent to acquire and annex further Palestinian territory in Gaza. Second, also as the overwhelming majority of parties have argued, Israel's occupation is unlawful because it deprives the Palestinian people of their right to self-determination. It is uncontested that the Palestinians are a people that are entitled to exercise self-determination. It is also established that self-determination is a right that is exercised in relation to a specific territory, and that it is unlawful to disrupt the unity and integrity of the territory in relation to which the right to self-determination is exercised. In the present case, the territories on which the Palestinians are entitled to exercise self-determination are the West Bank, Gaza and East Jerusalem, which constitute a single, indivisible territorial unit. Violating the right to self-determination also constitutes a violation of a peremptory rule of international law. Third, the cumulative effect of Israeli policies and practices that are associated with the occupation provides an additional basis on which to conclude that the occupation is, as a whole, unlawful. This is a point that deserves to be highlighted because it has been argued that violations of the law of belligerent occupation do not affect the legal status of the occupation. Specifically, the United States claimed, and I quote, "that international law does not provide for an occupation itself to be rendered unlawful or void based either on its duration or on any violations of occupation law." This view is incorrect. The violations of international law committed by Israel in the occupied territories constitute continuing and composite breaches of international law. Specifically, Articles fourteen and fifteen of the ILC Articles on State Responsibility provide a basis for establishing that separate and distinct violations of the law of belligerent occupation can, when combined and viewed cumulatively, lead to the conclusion that the occupation as a whole is unlawful. Article fourteen-two of the Articles on State Responsibility defines a continuing wrongful act as one that continues in time and remains not in conformity with an international obligation. According to the ILC, examples of a continuing wrongful act include, and I quote, "the maintenance by force of colonial domination and unlawful occupation of part of the territory of another state." This confirms the relevance and applicability of this concept to the case of Palestine. Other examples of Israeli practices amounting to continuing breaches include settlements in the West Bank and East Jerusalem, the separation wall, the network of bypass roads, legislative acts purporting to annex portions of the Palestinian territories and the exploitation of water resources in the West Bank. In addition, internationally wrongful acts that are attributable to Israel should be viewed as composite breaches of international law. As defined by Article fifteen of the Articles on State Responsibility, composite acts are made up of a series of actions or omissions defined in aggregate as wrongful. This does not exclude the possibility that every single act in the series could be wrongful in accordance with another obligation. As the ILC explained, the concept of composite breaches is intended to address situations where the responsible entity, including the state, adopted a systematic policy or practice, and that is precisely why the concept of composite breaches is valuable in the present case. It captures the fact that Israel's conduct is not composed of random or isolated wrongful acts. Israel is pursuing a systematic policy that is designed to perpetuate its control of the Palestinian territories. For example, the establishment and expansion of Israeli settlements and the transfer of over seven hundred thousand Israeli settlers to the occupied territories is wrongful under Articles forty-nine of the Fourth Geneva Convention. Similarly, the construction of a bypass road is wrongful under Articles forty-six and fifty-two of the nineteen oh-seven Hague Regulations and Articles forty-nine, fifty-two and fifty-three of the Fourth Geneva Convention. However, in addition to violating these specific rules of international law, the settlements, the bypass roads and the separation wall and other practices are elements of an Israeli policy through which it is seeking to gain permanent control of the occupied territories, making it impossible to restore the status quo ante bellum. These Israeli practices, when viewed in their totality, make the occupation unlawful because they constitute composite wrongful acts that violate the prohibition on the use of force, the prohibition on the acquisition of territory by force, the prohibition on systematic racial discrimination and the Palestinian people's inalienable right to self-determination. Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, I will now address the question of whether there are circumstances that preclude the wrongfulness of Israel's conduct. Specifically, I will argue that Israel cannot validly invoke their right to self-determination, excuse me, the right to self-defence to justify its occupation of the Palestinian territories. In this regard, the historical record is unequivocal. Israel's occupation of the Palestinian territories was a result of an act of aggression that commenced on June fifth, nineteen sixty-seven. Moreover, it should be recalled that international law does not recognise a purported right of anticipatory, preemptive or preventive self-defence. The terms of Article fifty-one of the Charter are unambiguous. The right to self-defence is triggered, quote, "if an armed attack occurs," end quote. Indeed, the Organisation of African Unity declared on numerous occasions that Israel's use of force in nineteen sixty-seven amounted to an act of aggression. It should also be recalled that in the wall opinion, the Court determined that Article fifty-one of the Charter has no relevance where the alleged threats invoked by Israel to justify its conduct originate from within, not from outside, the occupied territories. And even if one were to assume arguendo that Israel may invoke the right to self-defence as a circumstance precluding wrongfulness, which it cannot, it is patently clear that self-defence cannot justify Israel's practices. Self-defence is a narrowly construed exception to the prohibition on the use of force. Israel's practices that are designed to perpetuate its occupation can never satisfy the requirements of necessity and proportionality. Furthermore, as several states have already affirmed in their pleadings, the exercise of self-defence can never provide a valid basis for acquiring title to territory that is occupied as a result of the exercise of the right to self-defence. Moreover, given that many of the internationally wrongful acts attributable to Israel are violations of rules of use Cogan's, it is our submission that self-defence cannot be invoked in this context. Article twenty-six of the ILC Articles on State Responsibility and Article eighteen of the ILC Conclusions on Identification and Legal Consequences of Peremptory Norms of General International Law are clear. Quote, "Where the responsibility of a state for a breach of a peremptory norm is invoked, the state against which the breach is invoked cannot excuse itself from responsibility by raising any circumstance that might ordinarily preclude its wrongfulness." In short, the African Union submits that Israel cannot invoke self-defence as a circumstance precluding wrongfulness. Finally, Mr. President, distinguished members of the Court, I will turn to the question of the consequences arising from these internationally wrongful acts. The ILC Articles on State Responsibility affirm the customary principle that, quote, "every internationally wrongful act entails the international responsibility of the responsible state." It is on this basis that the Chagos opinion, that in the Chagos opinion, after the Court determined that the United Kingdom's continued administration of the Chagos Archipelago constituted a wrongful act, it was held that the United Kingdom was under an obligation to bring an end to its administration of Chagos, quote, "as rapidly as possible, thereby enabling Mauritius to complete the decolonisation of its territory consistent with the right to self-determination." The same is required here. Israel must end its unlawful occupation of all the Palestinian territories as rapidly as possible in order to enable the Palestinian people to exercise their fundamental right of self-determination. This is the request that the majority of parties participating in these proceedings have made. The United Kingdom, however, is a notable outlier on this point. It argues that if the Court were to address the status of the occupation and require Israel's withdrawal, that would undermine the Security Council's framework that is premised on reaching a two-state solution through a process of negotiations. The African Union does not agree. To condition the end of occupation on a negotiated settlement is to make the occupation permanent, given that the occupying power, Israel, refuses to negotiate on the basis of the two-state solution, and it has declared its will that it will never accept the establishment of a Palestinian state. Those states that purport to support the two-state solution ought to endorse calls for this Court to unequivocally determine that Israel's occupation of the Palestinian territories is unlawful. This is especially necessary given the peremptory nature of the right to self-determination and the prohibition on the acquisition of territory by force. The modalities necessary to end the occupation as rapidly as possible could be decided under the supervision of the relevant organs of the United Nations. Israel's unlawful occupation of the Palestinian territories also gives rise to consequences for other states, including the customary legal obligations reflected in Article forty-one of the Articles on State Responsibility, which are, one, not to recognise any benefit accruing to Israel from the unlawful occupation; two, not to lend aid or assistance to Israel that might further the occupation; and, three, to cooperate to end the unlawful occupation and to protect the right of self-determination of the Palestinian people. It is perplexing that the United States has challenged the customary status of Article forty-one. This long-established principle has been recognised by the Court itself in the wall advisory opinion and by the UN Security Council. It was even applied by the United States in nineteen thirty-two in the context of the Japanese aggression against China in what was known as the Stimson Doctrine. Pursuant to this doctrine, the United States, the United States Government declared that, quote, "it cannot admit the legality of any situation de facto, nor does it intend to recognise any treaty or agreement that impairs the sovereignty, independence or territorial integrity of China." The Court should uphold this principle. In its written statement, the African Union offered various specific ways in which states may practically and meaningfully comply with these obligations of non-recognition, non-assistance and cooperation. with these obligations of non-recognition, non-assistance, and cooperation. The African Union simply wishes to emphasize that occupation and self-determination cannot exist at the same place and the same time. If occupation is illegal, it must be ended to permit the recognition of self-determination. In closing, Mr. President, members of the court, the African Union reiterates its call to end Israel's occupation of the Palestinian territories. The injustice being wrought against the people of Gaza, as we convene here in the Great Hall of Justice, makes it imperative to end Israel's impunity and hold it accountable to the rule of law. The Court of History may very well judge the credibility of international law on the basis of the outcome of these proceedings. The international community has let down the Palestinian people, but the African Union has faith that in this court, justice will prevail. The betrayal of the sacred trust that is the self-determination of the Palestinian people is an enduring injustice that pleads to be remedied. It is the only path towards ensuring a future of security, stability, peace, and prosperity for the peoples of a troubled region. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the delegation of the African Union for its presentation. The court will meet again this afternoon at three P M. to hear Spain, Fiji, and the Maldives. The setting is adjourned.